Can't see what's on the screen and what's not. If I could ask the clerk to do a roll call to see what members are present?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Harris Dawson?
Present.
Councilmember Blumenfield?
Present.
Councilmember Price? Councilmember Cidio? Councilmember Lee?
Okay, Price is present.
Price, there we go.
Yes, we have three in a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Price comes through in the clutch. All right. We are, this is a special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council's Planning and Land Use Management Committee. We're joined by Vice Chair, Mr. Bob Blumenfield of the San Fernando Valley, as well as Mr. Kern Price, my neighbor to the east and north. As we begin this Plumb meeting, we will first vote on items that are on a consent calendar. We will then hear from applicants and appellants on the agenda items, and subsequently open public comment for 45 minutes for items on the agenda. Once public comment is closed, we will deliberate on items on the agenda and move forward from there. Another step that we will do is ask staff if there are any amendments or changes to items before we begin to take votes. So I will begin with that. Department of City Planning or Building and Safety, if there are any changes or amendments to items that we're considering today, now is the time to bring those forward.
General, I'm here with City Planning, and there are no amendments from City Planning.
Thank you. So there are no amendments. That takes us, Mr. Mejia, to items two, three, and four, which the Chair is recommending we take on consent. If you could read those into the record.
Yes, councilmembers. Item two, this is a North Valley Area Planning Commission Recommended Zone Change located in CD3. It is for the construction of a nine-unit small lot subdivision. Item three is a North Valley Area Planning Commission Report, again, a zone change ordinance. This will be to construct a new single-family dwelling with an attached accessory dwelling unit, an ADU, located in CD12. And item four, also a zone change ordinance recommended by the City Planning Commission located in CD2. It's for a 54-unit multifamily residential apartment building with seven affordable housing units.
All right, thank you. If there's no discussion or objections, we'll take that on consent, seeing none, and I have full view of our members. That'll be the order. I think that takes us to testimony by applicant and appellants.
Yes, councilman, and this is a, the instruction being that the appellants and their representatives will be allowed to speak for a total of two minutes per side unless otherwise noted by the Chair.
All right, I just think we're waiting to bring them up in the queue.
Dana Sales, you're now in the meeting. Please press star six to unmute and begin comment. I'm muted. Technical items for whoever's running the meeting. The audio is not available on the phone call-in. Only on the link on the website.
All right, we can hear you, so you should proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, Dana Sales, on behalf of the applicant for item number five, representing the Venice Place Project. We are here today to ask you to deny all project appeals before you and uphold the determination of the zoning administrator and the West LA Area Planning Commission's approval of the project. As the authority on this case has now been ceded to the city council, it is incumbent upon you to determine whether there is any error or abuse of discretion by the city in certifying the EIR for this project, and by the zoning administrator in approving the requested entitlements, and by the West LA Area Planning Commission, who already denied the appeals in front of you. This project has a long history with more than eight years of processing at the city. More than a dozen staff in the planning department have worked on the case in that time. We have held over 25 community meetings, including having support from the Venice Neighborhood Council. Any claim that there has not been enough time to thoroughly vet this project is completely false, as it has been one of the most exhaustive public reviews of any project in the city. The record in front of you consists of thousands of pages of documentation, including the exhaustive EIR to fully analyze the project. The project has already had more than 15 hours of public hearings between two zoning administrator hearings and an area planning commission hearing, and we've had hundreds of community members offering public testimony and letters to file. The appeals before you today focus on issues that are not new to the project, were mentioned in public comment letters in the EIR and public testimony, and noted in multiple appeals to the project. At each of those instances, it was determined there was no basis for the objections, the facts and analysis surrounding the project are supported by substantial evidence, and thus the appeals here today present no evidence or objections that have not already been thoroughly vetted by the city. This is a project that is fully compliant with the municipal code, the Venice Coastal Specific Plan, and the land use plan. So why are we here? And what does it say about our public process when a project that is not asking for a single deviation is subject to review by the city council under Charter Section 2.5? Part of your purview is to evaluate whether the case deserves a remand back to the West LA APC to determine its fate again, and instead, we're respectfully asking you to exercise the authority that has now been granted to you through the Charter Section to be the decision-makers in this case, not remand back to the APC, and hopefully allow this project to finally move forward as approved at every level. Again, our outreach has been robust. We've attended and hosted over 25 community outreach meetings, open houses, and formal presentations in eight years. We've received support from the Venice Neighborhood Council, the LA Business Council, and the Venice Chamber of Commerce. We've submitted over 800 letters of support for the project to the file, and the community supporting this project is not made up of only people seeking to stop the project. Over the years, the applicant has made concessions, reducing project size, redesigning the project, and incorporating operating restrictions to ensure neighborhood compatibility, and yet, despite doing everything right that a project team can do, we're still sitting here today fighting for the very viability of the project. And again, for a project that is not seeking a single deviation from any city code or ordinance or the coastal act. The asks that have been made of this project and applicant have often been unreasonable and excessive, yet the applicant has willingly engaged in every conversation, trying to find compromise with the appellants, resulting in the best project for the community while maintaining financial and operational feasibility. The zoning administrator and the APC did not err in approving this project because, in reality, there was nothing to do not. We have met with the appellants multiple times, who after eight years now want this project to include affordable housing. Our team is deeply, deeply, deeply sympathetic to the need for affordable housing in the area, but there are also hundreds of affordable housing units in the pipeline in Venice, including a project that was on your agenda last week. This is not the site to solve the community's problem. So all uses in a project are necessary to create a balanced mix of resources, and this project is primarily a hospitality project. This is the right location for this project. The site is one of only two blocks on Abbot Kenny that are specifically designated for visitor-serving accommodations by the land use plan. The guest rooms meet a specific goal of the land use plan by providing visitor-serving accommodations within coastal zones and specifically provide legal alternatives to short-term rentals in the area. We can all agree to disagree with the appellants about what the appropriate use of the site here should be, but the focus of the discussion today should be whether you believe the collective body of multiple staff in the planning department, major projects, and zoning administrator, and the West LA Area Planning Commission misanalyze the project that has been exhaustively evaluated over an eight-year time period. Only a multifaceted infill project like this has the opportunity to enhance the built environment and make public improvements to the extent that the Venice Place project proposes. In addition to physical improvements and beautification on and around the property, the project brings significant number of temporary construction and permanent jobs to the area. Economically, the project will generate over $1.5 million of trans occupancy tax annually to the city, as well as sales tax and other property tax revenues from ongoing improvements. The appeals before you should be denied, upholding all project approvals as documented by the West LA Area Planning Commission, as there's no new information presented to warrant any other determination. There is no cause to remand this case back to the APC. The time for you to act is now and finally move this project forward. I appreciate your time. One other technical item, we submitted today a number of volunteered conditions of approval on technical corrections to the record that we were respectfully asked or incorporated into any determination on this case. Our team is available for questions, should you have any. Thank you. Item five, appellants.
Can you hear me okay?
Begin comment. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Jordan Sisson here for Local 11. Firstly, I want to say that, you know, the appellants here appreciate the difficult job Plumb faces when they have to make difficult decisions. That being said, this is not one of those cases. This is a very simple case. The case boils down to whether or not this project is a mixed-use project under the code and specific plan. That's because this project seeks deviations from commercial corner standards, it seeks to consolidate eight lots, and enjoys 50% more FAR density. Here, EDP and APC found the project to be mixed-use chiefly because they classified the hotel guest rooms as residential under three specific code provisions. That being said, all you have to do is look at the code, which plainly states that these hotel guest rooms are not residential uses. For example, LIMC Section 1222, Subdivision A23D, states that mixed-use projects is quote, "defined in Section 1309B3 that consist of predominantly residential uses," end quote. In turn, Section 13.09B3 explicitly states, "Guest rooms in hotels as defined under Section 12.03 are commercial uses." There's no dispute that the project's 78 guest rooms for short-term rentals are hotels as defined in Section 12.03. So hence, there is no ambiguity that hotel rooms are considered commercial here, and no reasonable person could find that this project, which includes only four dwelling units, which is less than 95, which is less than 5% of the project's entire square footage, is predominantly residential uses. That is dispositive in itself. But in addition to that, there's other considerations that should be considered. This project defining hotel guest rooms as residential clearly conflicts with the city's affordable housing literacy program, which defines, again, hotel guest rooms.
That's your time. Appellant John Given, you have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself and begin comment.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. John Given, on behalf of Keep Neighborhoods First, also on item five. KNF appreciates Councilmember Bonin's leadership on this project and the council's unanimous decision to take jurisdiction. As Councilmember Bonin's 245 motion, I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I heard a noise. As Councilmember Bonin's 245 motion noted, there are significant issues with the project that are not resolved. The main issue for KNF is the failure of the project to provide any affordable housing. We agree with and support the other appellants, unite here and citizens preserving Venice as well. KNF has participated in meetings with the applicant and his representatives. Both sides expressed an interest in continuing that dialogue to address the community's concerns, though I take it from the applicant's representative, that is no longer the case. KNF suggests the best way to allow further dialogue would be for Plumb to recommend to the council that the West LA APC actions denying the appeals be vetoed and remanded back. If you decide to hear the appeals, however, KNF urges that they be granted. I assume members will have reviewed the written record, but I will summarize briefly the main points of our appeal. The project destroys three single-family residences subject to the city's rent stabilization ordinance of the Mellow Act. Those units are legally permitted as dwelling units, and they were illegally converted for commercial daycare. There is no substantial evidence that dwelling unit use would be infeasible. The Mellow exemption relies entirely on information from the former property owner and assumes the underlying change of use was legal. Our appeal shows that is not the case. The project's replacement dwelling units seem to be quasi-hotel room units, and even if rented only for 30 days or longer, these are not adequate replacement for the lost affordable housing. The approval was for an apartment hotel. The applicant did not appeal that approval, but planning improperly altered the approval to a hotel before the appeals were heard. Only a hotel, motel, or tourist can have a short-term rental. The home-sharing ordinance legalized short-term rentals for certain residences, but it didn't change existing law to allow short-term rentals in apartment hotels. Further, the APC had no jurisdiction to modify the project when it effectively denied the appeals in their entirety, but it made them object modification nonetheless. KNF urges you to veto the APC action and send it back to the APC, or to grant the appeals and deny the project. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment for appellants and applicants at this time.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. For the record, Len Nguyen, Senior Planning Deputy for Councilmember Mike Bonin. This project before you today is one of the biggest and most significant projects in Venice in decades, and projects in Venice need to be considered carefully for compliance with the coastal act, the Venice Specific Plan, the certified land use plan, and other land use regulations specific to the area. The project sits on Abbot Kenny, a busy commercial corridor, and on Electric Avenue, the western border of the Oakwood neighborhood. While this project has had a long history, those opposed to or concerned about the project have raised issues that need to be thoroughly vetted given the project's unique location. Given that the discussions between the applicant, appellants, supporters, opponents, and Councilmember Bonin's office are ongoing, and that council has until September 15th to act, councilmember requests that the item before did the council without recommendation, thereby allowing these conversations to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our applicants and appellants, as well as testimony from Council District 11 on item number five. We will move from that to public comment on number five and other items from the general public. You'll have a minute to speak. We have literally dozens of callers, so we will allot 45 minutes to public comment, putting us to close at 10 minutes after the hour. 10 minutes after the hour, we'll close public comment, so from there, I'll turn it over to staff to hear from the public.
We will now open for public comment to the general public comment. CLA, can you please read the instructions for a public comment into the record?
Sure. At the discretion of the Chair, a total of 45 minutes has been designated for public comment on all items, and once the time comes to an end, no further public comment will be heard. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252, and use meeting ID number 1616446631, and then press number sign. Press number sign again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press asterisk nine to request to speak. During public comment, city staff will call on members of the public by the last four digits of their phone number. Once the caller hears the last four digits of their number, they are automatically unmuted and should be ready to speak. Once the caller is ready to speak, he or she must state their name and the items they are calling to speak on. Failure to do so will result in the call being muted and subsequently disconnected. Members of the public wishing to speak on one agenda item only shall have an opportunity to speak for one minute. Members of the public wishing to speak on more than one item shall present all comments during the multiple agenda item comment segment of the meeting, and shall be allowed to speak for a total of two minutes. This concludes the remarks.
Caller 7887, you're now on the call. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Caller 7887, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
Sean Gale, regarding the Venice Place Project.
You have one minute.
So the resistance to this project seems thoroughly misguided. For one thing, the economic value of it alone, especially in what's going to be a down economy coming out of this crisis, is silly, but beyond that, it's a wonderful addition to what's become of Venice. The resistance here seems to be holding on to an idea of Venice that's long since departed. I've been in Venice for 20 years, and I've been an architect here all that time, and it seems like one of the items that is, one of the, sorry, it seems like a project that is going to add tremendously to what Venice has become and is becoming. Thanks.
Caller 4744, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
One of the, sorry, it seems like a project that is going to add tremendously to what Venice has become and is becoming. Thanks.
Caller 7667, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Caller 7667.
Hi there, yes, my name is Anthony Aziz. I live on Superva Avenue in Venice. I'd like to add my support for the Venice Place Project. My son goes to Westminster Public School directly across from it. I think this will be good for the neighborhood and good for Venice in general.
Caller 7547, please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on. Caller 7547.
Caller 1151, please state your name and the items you choose to speak on.
George Francisco, speaking on the Venice Place Project, which is ID 1616446631, I believe.
You have one minute, sir.
Okay. George Francisco, President of the Venice Chamber of Commerce, an organization of over 350 small businesses and nearly 10,000 employees, here to officially register our support, longstanding enthusiastic for this project. Regardless of the reasons that it's come before you, the unknowable and specious reasons that a project with over a decade of meticulous planning and approvals, I would simply hope that you, as councilmembers, recognize your duty to the entire city, a city that's in a financial meltdown right now, and that a hotel in the city's arguably top tourist destination will go a very long way towards restoring tax revenues to the city and supporting the many, many, many local businesses. And it should be a responsibility of you to approve the project and to see it fit after nearly a decade of approvals. Thank you.
Caller 2243, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on.
Number five.
Thank you, you have one minute.
Hi, this is Sunny Bach, and I want to share my concerns about the Venice Place Project. I think that it's a great project, and I'm concerned by the people that are opposing it, actually. I think it's wonderful, and it'll be a big addition to the community. We need that right now to lessen the Airbnbs in the neighborhood, and also to have a business that is supportive of the community, especially these days. Thank you.
Patricia McAllister.
Yes, I'm here.
You can begin your public comment now.
Public comment, I want to comment on some of the items also. My public comment is, there are malls that are open and some malls are not open. The Jewish students are going to school. We see, I see on this agenda where you're doing the same thing you've always done. You're building these hotels, you're tearing down affordable housing, and these hotels have no affordable units in them. I say to Jose, use Jose Wezar to not go to prison by himself. You guys were also approving all of these construction contracts, and I think you were getting a cut. And this is to Jose to squeal on you guys and send some of you to prison with him. Okay? We need some change in this city. We've got 30,000 of our black people on the street, homeless, and you're doing nothing but get, building these hotels and tearing down affordable housing. And this hotel that you, and this one unit, this building you're building here on Glen Oaks, it has no affordable units in it. None. All market-rate apartments. So you haven't changed one bit. You're doing the same thing, and we want open City Hall meetings. We want some meetings, we'll wear our masks. You have the judge in there giving his meetings about affordable housing. We want to get back into City Hall, because people need to know that what's going on with this coronavirus, and they need to know the hospitals are being paid $39,000 for everybody who dies from coronavirus if they're using an ventilator. So this thing is...
Mr. Chair, may I take a moment to make a clarification for the callers?
Yes, ma'am.
So if the callers, if you are hoping to listen to the meeting by dialing the number that you are using to provide public comment, that's not the correct route. The number that you are using to provide public comment is strictly for that. If you want to listen to the meeting, the meeting is being transmitted via Granicus, so if you can go to the lacity.org website and listen to the meeting that way, or you may dial any of the numbers provided on the agenda, and you can listen via your telephone in those areas, and listen to the meeting that way. But if you're trying to call and listen through that Zoom number, it's not going to be possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Carry on with public comment.
Caller 2443, please... Caller twenty-four forty-three, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Yes, am I on?
Yes.
Sorry. I've been on hold for a long time. Live in CD-11 and tracked this project for several years, and I think it's very unfortunate that council members taking action through a rarely-used initiative to basically pull this thing back, where it's had widespread community support, and it's done everything appropriate to get to this point of approvals. So strongly support the project, and I think it's conformed, unlike the hotel raid on the street. This project's done everything right and by the book, and should be approved. Thanks.
Caller seventy-two sixty-three, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller seventy-two sixty-three. Caller sixty-six fifty-six, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller six-six five-six. If you wish to speak on.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Caller seventy-eight forty-nine, if you wish to speak on. Caller ninety-six zero-zero, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
I would say, because I like the Celtics, I would say the Celtics, but I'm not going to be even slightly surprised if Toronto wins. Such a great Nick Nurse statistic.
Much I'd love to talk with you about the game, you gotta be on topic. We're not in charge of the NBA playoffs.
Does that mean you're calling on me?
I think it's your turn.
Okay. I'm calling about the Venice Project. I really think it should get approved. I feel like they've done everything they can do. My name's Chris Moore. I don't live in Venice anymore, but I'm still in the District 11, and it just seems crazy this has gone on for so long. These guys are doing everything possible, and I don't really know how to, you know, express the frustration that I think they must feel, but also I think the area would benefit so much from their proposal.
Your timer's still running.
Okay, that's pretty much what I wanted to say, just say it seems, you know, it seemed more fair if everything was transparent about why they're still an issue. They don't even have any of the, you know, they don't need any variances, even. They've satisfied all questions.
Thank you. Caller thirty-three thirty-five, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller thirty-three thirty-five.
Yes, hi, Anthony Casia. I wish to talk about Venice Place, items...
Thank you, you have one minute.
My name is Anthony. I moved to Venice in nineteen eighty-eight, over thirty years ago. I've owned property in Oakwood for twenty-two years. This project has been designed by an architect who's worked in this area for as long as that timeline and lives here himself, and helps with the community boards, etc. This is a beautiful project. There are no exceptions requested for it. We need to approve it today. I understand some people have issues with it, but we need to move forward, and we need to use this project to help revitalize the community, especially with COVID and what's done to the economics of the area. Thank you.
Caller thirty-three thirty-five, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Yes, my name is Anthony Casia. I wish to talk about...
Oh, sir, I think you just...
The Venice Place, I did, I just spoke. Yeah, I just spoke. Are we good?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much.
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Please press star six to unmute yourself and begin comment. Now?
I wish to talk about...
Hello?
The Venice Place, I did, I just spoke. Yeah, I just spoke.
Hello, we hear you. Yes. Hello?
All right, thank you so much.
We can hear you, running.
Hello, Amanda Seward. I'm, I speak on item number five.
Item five, please.
Yes, I'm, I speak...
Please press star six to unmute yourself and begin comment. Can you just turn your volume down? I think the problem is that you're trying to listen to yourself and also get your comment.
Oh, so I should just keep talking?
We hear you.
Okay.
But also lower your volume.
Yes, thank you.
We can hear you, running.
Yes, I'm here, Amanda Seward, on behalf of the nonprofit Citizens Preserving Venice. The applicant complains about the length of time that it has taken for them to get this project through, but the length of time is partly their own fault. They attempted to ram down and mitigate it, negative declaration initially instead of going through the EIR, and the EIR was just released more recently, and they've also done a good job of outreach to the Venice, the Venice Chamber of Commerce, but they have not done the outreach that is necessary for Oakwood, the community that will most likely feel the most brunt of the project. I agree with all of the other appellate arguments against the project. In addition, the three historic properties that are being demolished should not be demolished. There was an alternative, a project number four, that was determined by all sides as being the environmentally superior project, and it was rejected because it was alleged to be not as profitable, but under SEQA analysis, it doesn't matter if it's not as profitable as the project, as long as it is, can still be feasible and can still be profitable, even if it is not as profitable as the developer would like. And that finding was not made in this case, and the case should be reviewed again. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Caller thirty-five forty-six, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hello?
Hello? Caller, could you please lower your volume? I can hear an echo.
Okay, I was on speakerphone.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, okay. Okay, just to let you know, I've been trying to get into the meeting for like forty-five minutes, so I'm sure a lot of others are probably having trouble getting in as well.
Thank you. Could you please put your name and the items you wish to speak on?
My name is Margarita Alvarez, and I am calling about the Abbott Kenny Hotel.
Thank you, you have one minute.
Ma'am, your time is running. Oh, I can speak already?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, I'm calling regarding the Abbott Kenny Hotel, and I've been a Venice resident for my whole life. I worked at the school, my nieces and nephews went there as well, at Westminster, which is where the hotel is scheduled to be built in front of it, and I have severe reservations about having a hotel in front of a school. Just logically, it's not a good place to have a hotel right in front of a school. You have a lot of people going in and out, you're selling alcohol, they have a twenty-four hour view of the school itself and of the playground, so there's like a lot of privacy being lost by the kids of that school. That's my main concern. The other concern is regarding the lots. They're trying to tie, the developers are trying to tie together several lots that technically should not be, or legally should not be tied together. That's setting a very dangerous precedent for Venice and our community, and I am strictly opposed to this, and I hope the planning committee takes our consideration, takes our point of view into consideration, because we live here. We're the ones who are going to be affected. The traffic's going to be horrible, as it is, but the streets are small, the interest to where the hotel's going to be is very small streets, so there's a lot of issues, parking, excess traffic, being in front of a school, and the size of the hotel, and the lots that are going to be together. I urge you to please reject this, to let the community provide more input. Thank you.
Caller ninety-nine thirty-nine, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller ninety-nine thirty-nine. Caller eighty-four zero-four, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller eighty-four zero-four, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hi, I wish to speak on the Venice Place Project.
Thank you, you have one minute.
Hi, so I just wanted to state for the record that I was disconnected twice while trying to make a statement, and also I just find it very disheartening to not be able to listen to the meeting when I call in. I do Zoom meetings all the time, and you can usually listen to the meeting, so I hope that would be corrected. And then I just want to say that I strongly support, my name's Melissa Diner, I've lived in Venice for thirteen years. I strongly support the hotel being built. These guys have done everything the right way. I've never seen such great community outreach, trying to meet people in the middle, and I'm all for Venice staying diverse and continuing to support hotel projects, new innovative building projects, and also affordable housing that is affordable to build. So I encourage you to support this project, help create jobs, and help keep Venice a vibrant place for people who want to visit. We need those tourist dollars right now, more than ever. I went out last night walking, and I didn't recognize Venice. There were people that looked like wild animals on the street. I was scared in my own community for the first time, and we need these streets and neighborhoods to be activated with people and responsible operators. Thank you so much for your time.
Caller sixty-thirty, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Carl Lambert, and... Item five.
Thank you, you have one minute.
Hi, it's Carl Lambert. Just really like to see this project move forward. I think it's taken eight years, been a lot of community outreach, and the applicant has really bent over backwards to cut the project back and, you know, accommodate the concerns of the community. So, again, I think it's a great project, it'll be a beautiful piece, and a lot of the locals will come down and visit and utilize it. Thank you.
Caller zero-eight four-eight, please state your name and the item you wish to speak on. Caller zero-eight four-eight. Caller seventy-eight thirty-six, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Hello? Hi, can you please lower your volume? And then...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can hear you. There's just an echo in the background.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. I'd like to speak on item number five. My name is Martha Avery. I'm a Venice resident of thirty years. The developer will tell you that outreach for this project has been inclusive and comprehensive. It's not. When we did a five-thousand-piece fire doc this weekend in the neighborhood, most affected by the project, nearly everyone we talked to had never heard of it. Meanwhile, the developers sending emails of support from people as far away as Illinois, pointing their representatives, there are a lot of reasons why this outreach has not worked, starting with the developer's consultants, paid to carefully curate the impression of outreach without actually risking outreach to neighbors who might object to the impact of the project would have on their lives. And lastly, there's the West LA Planning Commission, which is failing to implement the Mayor's Executive Directive Twenty-Seven. By their actions, they are perpetuating the racism and inequalities that continue to harm communities of color in L.A. In July, against the recommendation of common office, he refused to, they refused to continue caring on the hotel. So, lastly, what I'll say, I ask this body to deny the project as proposed.
Caller sixty-seven sixty-six, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Hello? 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 Hello, we can hear you. Can you please lower your volume? There's an echo. Okay? Thank you. Can you please state your name and the items you wish to speak on?
My name is Molly Favor.
Hi, we can hear you, can you please lower your volume? There's an echo. Okay? Thank you, can you please state your name and the items you wish to speak on?
My name is Molly Favor. I want to speak on the proposed hotel. I own a home in Oakwood on Westminster Avenue, a few blocks from the proposed hotel. I think it would be a real benefit to Abbott Kenny right now and the whole community. And I just would like to point out that we already have a hotel, the Irland, in Venice. And there isn't a traffic problem, and there isn't a delivery trucks problem, and there isn't what all this oppositions are talking about. Also, I'm very disappointed that Councilman Bonin has not been to the meeting and hasn't formed an opinion, and he's waffling, and it's just caused a lot of disruption. I strongly support the hotel and hope you pass it. Thank you.
Caller eighty-one forty-five. Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller eighty-one forty-five.
Hello?
Hi, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Yeah, my name is Anthony Wells, I would like to speak on item number five. I'm a...
Thank you, you have one minute, you can begin.
Thank you, my name is Anthony Wells, I'm a thirty-year resident of the Oakwood neighborhood in Venice. I live on Santa Clara Avenue, and I'm fully in support of the Venice Place Project. I feel that the individuals behind the project have the best interests of the neighborhood at heart. And I see no reason for the last-minute delay that Bonin's office put into place. It makes absolutely no sense to hold this project up. This will be a credit to the neighborhood, and is perfectly in scale with and appropriate to its environment. I look forward to seeing it completed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Caller zero-eight four-eight. Please state your items you wish to speak on.
I'm speaking on the Venice Place Project.
Thank you, you have one minute.
Thank you. Thank you, committee members. This project's an accumulation of workaround after workaround upon other workarounds to salvage a misconceived objective. Instead of respecting the rules and doing our best to abide by them, the developers spent years trying to game them, from trying to break the height limit to expanding a single liquor license from a single restaurant table service to include the entire block-long project, including room service, poolside service, minibars, and even a liquor store. When they realized they couldn't get away with consolidating eight lots under the coastal land use plan, they cut the building into pieces and then connected the pieces with three levels of bridges to make them function as a single building. He poses this as a mixed-use project, even though it has no real residential units, but is demolishing three RSO residential units he's been using illegally as commercial space, at least to a preschool. The plans do say they're for dwelling units, but it turns out he's planning on renting them out through the hotel operator. So what are they really? In the plans...
Thank you. Caller ninety-two sixty, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller twenty-six ninety-three. Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller twenty-six ninety-three.
Caller ninety-two sixty, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Caller, can you please lower your volume?
Sorry, uh, hi, it's me, right?
Yes, are you...
Okay.
Twenty-six ninety-three?
Yes, I, I'm struggling with this weird system where I have to call in and listen separately.
Okay, please state the items you wish to speak on.
My name is Bill Przlucky, I am the Executive Director of People Organized for West Side Renewal. I am calling in regarding the Abbott Kenny Hotel and the two-forty-five motion. So, again, our organization has worked for a long time on enforcing, proper enforcement of the interim administrative procedures, enforcing the MELLO Act, the state law to preserve and create affordable housing within the coastal zone. We support the two-forty-five motion, because we have deep concerns about this project that we think that it runs afoul of the MELLO Act in a number of ways. The MELLO Act prohibits the conversion of residential to non-residential uses, requires the replacement of existing affordable housing, and requires the inclusion of new affordable housing in larger projects that are residential. This project sort of uniquely ticks all those boxes, depending on exactly which description of the project the department and the applicant are using at any particular time. It could incur one, two, or all three of those violations. So the punchline is, in the interest of creating and preserving affordable housing opportunities for low and moderate income people, we need to take another look at this project.
Caller forty-three fifty-six. Caller forty-three fifty-six, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller forty-three fifty-six.
Yes, hello, my name is Nicole Landis, and I'd like to speak on item number five. I am a longtime resident of Venice Beach, California, and I am also the co-founder of an organization in the community, Community Learning Garden. And we support the community, and we build community engagement by helping people to understand where their food comes from. This is an important project for our community for many reasons.
Can you all still hear me? Ma'am, your time is now up. Are you saying my time is up, that I'm done, or that I can complete my sentence? You just finished your public comment, ma'am. No, I was not finished. I was told to hold for a minute, so I apologize. And I wanted to share that this project is important for our community for many reasons. I believe it'll bring jobs, it'll bring more stability to our community. Caller eighteen eighty-seven. Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Yato.
Thank you, which item would you like to speak on?
Number five.
Thank you, you have one minute, you can begin your public comment now.
Now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Yato. I've been working in Venice for the last seven, eight years. And I really want to support this project. And, you know, the project is fully compliant with all the local city codes and, you know, without requiring any variance, like sections. So, it really is important that, you know, this one go through this hearing process, because, you know, everybody involved in this project has been working so hard and spending so much time to reach out to society. And so, and I really feel that it is really, um, not fair to have to go through this process after it was an anonymous approval in the last hearing. So...
Thank you, that's your time.
Okay.
Caller sixty-eight forty-three, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller sixty-eight forty-three, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
My name is James Ryan Nichols, and I wish to speak on the Venice Place Project.
Thank you, you have one minute, you can begin now.
As a resident of Venice, I live about quarter of a mile away from the project site. I support this project, and I feel that it should be approved to proceed. I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Caller zero-eight zero-six, please state your name and the items you wish to speak on. Caller zero-eight zero-six. Please lower your volume, we can hear the echo.
Hello?
Thank you, you have one minute. Hello? Hi, yes? Can you please state your name and the items you wish to speak on?
Yes, my name is Ally Bean, and I wish to speak on item five.
Thank you, you can begin, you have one minute.
Okay, there's been a lot of talk about community outreach. I was on a phone conversation with the applicant last night, Dan Abrams, and there's been a tremendous lack of outreach to the community that is going to be most affected, which is the historic Oakwood community. They feel ignored, they feel like their backs have been turned on them. And all that Councilman Bonin is requesting is an open dialogue with the community that will be most affected. There's many, many things that need to be ironed out, and we need this time. I heard him apologize to the leader of the Oakwood historic community on the telephone, because the outreach was not, he said that they couldn't go door-to-door. Well, we went door-to-door, and so many people have been ignored and need to be heard so that this can be, like, put through smoothly and in ways that are equitable, especially for the community that will be most affected, which is the historic Oakwood community. Thank you.
There is some connections back there that I could use, and I need, I just need a...
Oh, handy three zero zero.
Some signals to connect, to connect.
Hello?
Hello, caller ninety-three zero zero?
Yes.
Can you please lower your volume? But you can also state your name and the items you wish to speak on. There was just an echo in the background.
Hi, my name is Danny Rogioni, and I'd like to speak on item number five, the Venice Park Place, Project, the Venice Place Project.
Thank you, you have one minute, you can begin your public comment now.
I'm fully in favor and support this project. I live in Venice, just a few blocks away from it. It would be wonderful to have a hotel on Abbott Kenny, a new market, a bar, a restaurant, or whatever's going there. The scale and the scope, I believe, is totally compatible with the community. And I really think that having all these things in our community and new jobs and work for people, especially in this difficult time, is a great thing. And I don't think the city should be blocking this project at all. I think that you guys should allow it to be built. And I look forward to seeing it built. That's my whole comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're at, we're at ten minutes after, so that concludes our public comment at this time. Mr. Mejia, if you could read item number five into the record, and then we'll hear from planning staff following that.
Yes, Councilman, what's before you is a consideration of a veto and remand, or, in this case, we have heard the project, or will hear the project, presented by planning staff. It includes the environmental findings, the statement of overriding consideration, the mitigation measures, mitigation monitoring program, and sequel findings, and the four appeals that were filed, that were filed as it relates to a mixed-use project that is located in CD eleven. The appeal, the appeals, appeal to various land use entitlements recommended by staff. And in addition, this item came to committee as a result of a Charter Section two-forty-five motion introduced by the Councilman of the District, Councilman Bonin.
Excellent, and we have a report from Department of City Planning. Mr. Irving.
This is... Yeah, this is Peter Irving. So, the staff giving this report is going to be Ms. Melina Zazian, so I'm going to turn it over to her.
All right.
Hello?
Hi.
Oh, hi, this is Melina with City Planning. So, for today's, the Venice Place Project, as mentioned, this is subject to multiple public hearings, each several hours in length. The appeals of the ZA action were denied in part and granted in part by the West LA Area Planning Commission with modified conditions of approval and findings. The certification of the IIR was an appeal to City Council, and then August twenty-fifth, City Council asserted jurisdiction. So, the, it's actually, this avoided the EIR appeals. And nonetheless, staff responded to each appeal on the record in an August twenty-seventh memo to the council file. A lot of the appeals and comments that were presented to the council file have been fully responded to earlier in the appeals and staff reports to the APC, as well as in the supplemental response in August twenty-seventh. I'll just highlight some of the issues now that were presented during the public comment. Several commentators dispute the technical scope and definition of the project. This has been fully vetted by department staff, department of land safety decision-makers. The project qualifies as a hotel, not an apartment hotel, and as a mixed-use project. Some commentators say there would be significant traffic impacts, and that parking is inadequate. Again, this has been fully vetted by city staff and decision-makers. Traffic impacts are less than significant, and there will be adequate parking and automated subterranean parking facilities. In response to comments on air quality and emissions, there were minor corrections to project's emissions that were adopted by the APC. This did not change conclusions that air quality GHG is more less than significant. The EIR staff responses also demonstrate that although three historic buildings are located on-site, the site is not part of the historic district. There's also a statement of overriding considerations that was adopted as part of the sequel findings related to historic resources. There's also concerns about noise presented previously. The noise in the project would be audible in outdoor properties. Construction noise vibrationally significant and unavoidable, but would be temporary. The impacts were adequately analyzed and disclosed in the EIR and Appeal Staff Reports. In addition, there were new comments that were received, as you heard, requesting that Alternative Four be adopted rather than the project. Alternative Four is an alternative which would preserve three additional bungalows on-site. An economic feasibility analysis has recently been prepared, which demonstrates the Alternative Four... four would not be economically feasible. Therefore, planning staff recommends that the Plum Committee and City Council sustain the determination of the area planning commission to deny the appeals and approve the requested actions. Upon in-depth review of the issues raised by the various appeals, actions, and subsequent public comments, there's no substantial evidence that exists of errors or abuse of discretion committed by the area planning commission in regards, in regards to the points raised. Appeals can't be substantiated and therefore should be denied. In addition, staff requests that the Plum Committee and City Council, as part of their actions, sustain the actions of APC and direct staff to augment the SEQA record and the findings to address issues raised in these appeals and public comments, including the issues related to alternative four. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. Any questions or comments, members? Mr. Blumenfeld, Mr. Price. I don't think Mr. Price has any comments or questions, Mr. Blumenfeld. All right, given that we're, this seems like a very sensitive project in one of the most impacted neighborhoods in our, in the United States, frankly. The Venice Beach community, the historic Oakwood neighborhood, certainly Abbott Kenny, anybody who's been on that thoroughfare in the last 10 or 15 years recognizes the aggressive nature of the change there. The elected representative from that area has asked for more time to facilitate conversation and to discuss mitigations and really iron out all the problems. And so, in support of that, I'm going to move that we comply with his request and send this item back to council with no recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Mr. Blumenfeld. Mr. Mejia, can you call the roll?
Yes, and Councilmember, I should note that this item, the public hearing, has been satisfied in Plum today, and therefore, unless new information is presented in council, the public hearing has been satisfied.
Excellent.
And to call the roll, Councilman, Councilman Harris-Dawson as chairman, Councilman, Councilman Bob Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
And Councilmember Current Price.
Aye.
Okay, we have a unanimous decision. It'll go to council without recommendation.
All right, we will receive and file item number one. And with that, Mr. Mejia, can you confirm that this concludes our business for today?
That concludes our meeting for today, council.
Excellent, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.